Good evening, everyone. This is the Wednesday, February twenty eighth, regular meeting of the planning and zoning commission of town in normally scheduled for Tuesday, so we had to push it through this day. It's Wednesday, we've got room availability, et cetera. Let me take a couple of items on the agenda here. It's actually a rather short agenda, which would be nice. We could change. Let's go through attendance. Dan Rattman here, Chris Nielsen.
Here.
Kent Turner, he's out, right? Mark Castellano here, John Criss here, Chris Herring here, John Engel here, Paul Kanatik.
Yep.
Alan Swordbuck.
Yep.
Tom Benton is out, he's traveling. Kristina Larson, she's not going to be there. And Eric Knowles.
Yep.
Great. So we have almost all the regular attendees. Eric, typically, typically you're, you know, a sitting in that as an alternate until there's an opening or a need for a decision. From what I think I hear. We're going through a couple of the, the first one of the items of previous applications, so I can't see you for that. But we will have a new application for nine South Avenue. And then the thirty, three sixty five, which we wrote down, City Grace Park. So you can see the number nine South Avenue. All right. Wanting to get on, first item on the agenda, number six, Downriver Road. Do we have any applicants here?
Yes.
You're on Zoom?
Yes, we're on Zoom. Hello?
So, um, let me just read the entry here. The upon application of Cypress Group LLC owners for special permit approval pursuant to section three point two point C point one point B, to allow for a detached two-family in the heat residence zone at six Downriver Road, that end block eighty-two, block eighty-two. So, welcome back. You were here last month for the application. And no, I was not here, but I did watch the video and then most of the board members, commission members were here for that one. We wrapped up that meeting and we were going to come back to us with some additional information. Why don't you jump right in and tell us what you got?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I just want to start by saying I'm having a little bit of trouble hearing. Um, I tried to, I tried to log in on my phone as well, and I was still having an issue. Um, so it's not coming through quite so clear. So if I don't, uh, if I don't hear, um, one of your questions, excuse me. But, um, so yeah, I'm gonna share my screen with the presentation.
Hold on a second.
So, um, can you, Joe, this is Eric. So I just wanna let the commissioners know that we are, they're trying to tweak the lights and some new stuff. So just make sure that you either move the microphone close or lean in when you speak. Um, don't lean back when you're talking. Not putting on audio, but I'll put all the meetings this week.
Joe, um, speaking to you now, can you hear this clearly?
I, I don't hear it great, but I can hear it enough. All right, so. All right, uh, can everyone see the presentation?
Yes.
All right, great. All right, so, uh, yeah, the first page is just the proposed elevation, the front elevations again. Second is the attached alternative. Um, and then I wanted to start with, I think at the, at the last meeting, I believe it was Commissioner Angle had mentioned, he had made a comment, um, that this part of Main Street is really like the entryway to New Canaan. Um, and he wanted to make sure that it reflected as such. And while we didn't feel it would be best to, um, position the driveway on Main Street, uh, which I will get into later at the end of the presentation on the details, uh, we did, we did make some efforts to, um, make some changes to our elevations facing Main Street. Uh, you can see here, this is the original. And we added a few windows, a few peaks, um, an awning over the door here.
So the previous one is to the bottom right and the revised is upper left?
Yes, I'm sorry. So yeah, preview, the original is the bottom right and the revised is the top left. So we made some, we made some changes, um, to try to, like I said, to try to raise that elevation. And then I wanted to point out, this is what the neighbor, I know that, um, there were concerns about the screening the property from Main Street. Um, this is our neighbor right across the street on Five Downriver. That's their streetscape. Uh, this is the current streetscape at six Downriver. Um, and then this is what it'll look like with what we're proposing.
We lowered the tree.
So, you know, I, I think that, I think that it obviously does, you know, these are positive changes toward, to the streetscape, uh, compared to what it currently is. Um, are there any questions on that before I move on to the landscape plan?
Uh, can you talk a little bit about materiality of the sun? Uh, I know we can see the big gable that we introduced on the Main Street side. Actually, I have both buildings on the side elevations. Can you talk about what materials are going to be used on the sides of the building?
Yeah, so we're gonna use a, a vertical, uh, hardy board for the siding. Is likely what we're gonna end up going with. The vertical side, uh, hardy board for the siding. Uh, we typically use a Marvin integrity window. Uh, so that's what we'll do there. Uh, we do a door to match. Um, and then, yeah, and then we do AZAC trim. We do an AZAC trim package.
Do you see the revised rendering that you have on the screen?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Are those revised renderings that you have up on the screen?
Yes, this is, this is the revised rendering of that side elevation.
Were those part of the special part that you have written in the deck?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Um, I don't think we have these on file. Are you able to submit revised renderings as well?
Yeah, I, I could submit them. I, I could, uh, definitely add them to the file. I, I just, I wasn't sure if that was necessary. But I can do so.
Yes, please.
Absolutely. Um, and then, this is our landscape plan. We had, uh, environmental land solutions.
A question from Commissioner on the architectural plan.
Yep. This is Commissioner Swordbuck. This is actually something I asked you for on your last presentation. Now, I, I can't find it in the presentation from my computer. And I'd like to see it in more detail. Is there anywhere we can do something now with this? I can't see it from a distance or see it clearly from a distance.
You want me to add the, you want me to add the rendering to the file now?
Can you just zoom in, Joe, so the commissioner can see it here?
Sure.
It's kind of far away, so can you just do that?
Okay. And if, if we're just describing what you've done, just don't flip back and forth. Just describe what you've done.
So like I mentioned, we had, we had added this, uh, peak over here on the roof. Um, and then we had added a few windows in the previous. There was only one window, or there was one, one over one here, and then another single window over the door. We now have two over two windows. We added that peak. Uh, we did an, an awning over the slider. Um, and, you know, we tried to do the best we could, uh, make, do, uh, and make it look like a front streetscape, even though it's a side.
Is that an existing tree in front of it?
I'm sorry, say that again?
The tree in the rendering, is that existing?
The tree in the rendering? No.
So it's just decorative to the end?
Right. And again, the, the, the renderings are, so we're really, our plans, the renderings are, you know, we try to get them as close as possible, just to give an idea of what the goal is. But, we're, we're open to eliminating that tree or, you know, discussing the other trees that we have in the plan.
Well, make it even clearer. You said you're eliminating, you're open to eliminating the tree?
Right, uh, that's, yeah. If, if that's what the commission would be looking for, if, if they're not pleased with the tree.
No, to be clear, there, there is no tree on the lot now. That's what I thought I heard, right?
Right. Only tha- that tree that's shown is not there, no. All right. So then we got, we had a landscape plan prepared uh, by Environmental Land Solutions, uh, detailed landscape plan. Um, we, I had told him that, you know, you were looking for native species. I think, uh, one of the commissioners had requested native species, so that's what they had done. Um, they listed all their, all the common names right here in the plant list. Um, and then, you know, we ran a, so we had that row of trees along Main Street, and we also have the white picket fence along Main Street. Um, and then we have a row of trees accro- across the, uh, neighbor's driveway on four twelve Main Street and, uh, fence there as well, to create some privacy, um, you know, and to not negatively affect or impact her current situation.
This is Commissioner Chris, can you hear me? They didn't speak up, John. Can you hear me? John Criss from the commissioners?
Yeah, I, I can hear you a, a little bit.
Thank you. I was looking at the landscape plan and there seems to be one existing tree, which is on the, um, the north corner of the property on Main Street, this corner of the drawing.
Yep.
Existing tree on, uh, Downriver Road, which is on the far east part of the, uh, uh, property, where the dentures gets the laundry area, where the smoke gets you. Then you're adding one tree, which is the oak tree, which is also on the Main Street side. So the tree that you have in the rendering seem to be about where you're planning to put the red oak tree.
Right.
That question?
That's correct, yep.
I reviewed the, um, landscape plan and, um, it seems good to me. So that's my take on that.
All right, great. Great. Um, so on the, right here, we have the setbacks. Um, I know there were some concerns about the setbacks. We, I have, uh, my architect on the call. Um, and he, we, we addressed the setbacks. We pushed it from twenty-five to twenty-five, six and a half. Um, and I, I think that, uh, we're gonna be pretty comfortable building within those. As, as was brought up in the last meeting, uh, if we don't build within our setbacks, then we can't get a CO. So, you know, we're gonna make sure that we do. Do we have any questions in regards to the setbacks?
This is Commissioner Castellano. Have you dealt with the matter of the, of buttered driveway?
Yes, yep, that's, I'm, I'm gonna get to that. The, so right here, we have the survey. And we are, we, we, uh, propose an easement for the driveway. We have that easement. Our attorney had rewritten the easement here. Um, the neighbor on four twelve Main is currently having her attorney review it. Um, she, she looked at it, we discussed it, she didn't see any issues with it. Uh, we've made it so that we don't affect her, her driveway at all. At, we're just building around it basically and developing our lot around it. Um, so I don't, you know, I don't see that there are going to be any issues there. Uh, we don't, we're, we're not impacting her driveway at all.
Um, I have a question for Sarah. The patio on the western, um, building, uh, encroaching into the front door setbacks, do you see that?
Yep.
All right, and then, here we have our site plan. Um, it's not much has changed. We just, he made the changes to match the, um, the landscape plan and just added whatever he needed to add. We have a patio over, over on this, uh, unit one. And we eliminated the patios on building two due to the, um, sewer easement and then the upland review area. So we're, we're only doing a patio, we're proposing a patio in building one. Here we have the letters from the neighbors, the letters of support for two, uh, units. Um, all of those were sent to Sarah directly from the neighbors.
Correct. And then. Commissioner Castellano, one of the neighbors objected. Of those three letters, two of them supported the detached, but one of them did not affect for air?
No, all, all three of these neighbors were in support of the detach.
Uh, the letter from Mr. Sillow says, upon reviewing the plan, I want to convey my preference for the attached units over the detached ones. And my opinion, the detached units appear disproportionately large and may adversely impact the image of aesthetic appeal. Can you reconcile that with what you just said?
Yeah, he, that is written incorrectly. Um, he, the attached unit is the one that was disproportionately out large. Um, I can get confirmation on that from Mr. Sillow as, you know, condition of the approval. And then down here, uh, the, the final slide, we have an explanation as to why we decided to maintain the frontage for both the units on Downriver. Um, has, has every, everyone had an opportunity to read it, or would you like me to read it?
This is a letter from, sorry.
It's just a, it's just a letter, just an explanation as to why we decided to maintain the frontage on Downriver Road as opposed to, uh, having frontage on Main Street and a driveway on Main Street.
Yeah, just give us, give us the summary on it.
Yeah, so it was just that, you know, after consideration, uh, we've come to the conclusion that the property maintaining the frontage on Downriver Road as opposed to Main Street is the best solution for the current neighbors and future residents of the townhomes. The decision to utilize Downriver Road for driveway access pri- prioritizes the safety of residents and minimizes potential risks associated with high traffic volumes. Downriver's road status as a dead-end street inherently results in significantly lower traffic flow compared to Main Street. This reduced traffic presents fewer hazards for residents entering and exiting their driveways particu- particularly during peak hours when traffic congestion on Main Street may pose challenges for safe maneuvering. We recognize the importance of balancing the needs of the community with the practical considerations of residential development. While Main Street may offer greater visibility and accessibility, we believe that the advantages of u- utilizing Downriver Road for driveway access outweigh any potential drawbacks. Our goal is to create a cohesive and livable neighborhood that enhances quality of life for the, uh, for its residents. Thank you, guys, for considering, uh, our rationale preferring Downriver Road as the primary access point for the driveways for the new homes. We are committed to working collaboratively with the special permit committee and the local community to ensure that our proposed element meets the needs and expectations of all stakeholders. So basically, just that, you know, this is, it's more so safety than anything else. Um, pulling off and on to Downriver Road as opposed to off and on to Main Street.
Okay. Um, I do have a, this is Commissioner Rattan. I do have a concern as to the space you've provided between the two garages. It's quite tight in there in terms of maneuverability of someone coming in the driveway and being able to, number one, turn into the garage. It's like, number two, being able to pull out of the garage and have to do about a four-point turn to actually point themselves back out the driveway. Is there any ability to, I, I understand you're against setbacks, uh, and and the easement here, you're kind of wedging it in there, but did you, did you explore trying to keep those garages full, uh, more, uh, further apart?
Uh, Ravi, um, would you like to speak to that? Oh, yeah. I'm not sure if Ravi's on. The, um, yeah, we, we had, Ravi, are you there?
Yeah, I, I'm on there, but we are so tight and, but we still have the required distances as required by the zoning regulation.
We, we stipulate the back-to-back on a spot like that, but it was larger.
So we just have a drive-through requirement of twelve feet?
Drive-through requirement, but when you have, for example, parking spots on a, a two-way dry aisle between heading spots, are we twenty-four feet?
I don't believe you regulate that, I guess.
No, I, I understand that. I'm just saying, commercial, we regulate three twenty-four feet.
No, I just mean, we can't hold them to a commercial standard.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just, I just fear you're gonna create a very tight condition in there. There's very little maneuvering space here. Especially for two-car garage on both sides and then two visitor spots in back. Um, is there anything that would, uh, the driveways there, that's supposed to be, you know, the, uh, interesting thing was right?
I'm sorry, I'm not hearing you so well.
You have the setback and the, uh, the driveway.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm not hearing, if, if you have any suggestions, I mean, if it does, it, it meets, uh, zoning regulations. So I'm not, you know, entirely sure. We're open to, you know, suggestions from the committee, but.
Well, I think I would hopefully deal with the suggestions from the committee.
Well, if it, if it meets the regulations, I, we, we just draw, we draw the plans. Our architect draws the plans with whatever meets the, meets the regulations.
Understood. I'm just bringing to light the fact that you're creating a very tight environment there for whoever ends up purchasing your homes, so.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I understand that that's something we'll have to deal with. Um, you know, it's, it's not ideal, but we are, we're dealing with a tight space. Um, we do have those parking spaces in the back. When that lot is completely full, um, then that's gonna be, you know, it certainly won't be ideal, but those will be, you know, the, when the, when those visitor spots aren't filled, there's a little hammerhead for the owners to pull out into. Um, and those will be potential drawbacks when we go to sell the property.
It's, uh, if, if I may say something, it's, it's Gary Bavona here. How's everyone doing tonight? Uh, we, we've built this on, on, on some tight lock conditions in the past, townhouses and, and other developments. We find that with the hammerhead in these situations, uh, mo- most of the, uh, the, the unit owners will pull in, into the, the additional parking spaces and then back into the garages. It seems to be the, the, uh, you know, the most effective way for parking in those tight spaces. Doesn't necessarily mean that they will do that, but, you know, pe- people generally figure out the, you know, the most, uh, convenient way to get in and out of their spaces. And that, that seems to work well in these tight situations.
That's fine. Again, this is a recommendation to Sarah's point. You meet the, the word, the code in terms of, uh, of the required driveway clearance. But what I would, my recommendation to you would be to create your visitor spot adjacent, uh, any back of each garage, parallel to the garage, and then leave yourself a hammerhead turnaround in the back area so that not only your visitors can be able to maneuver in that back, but whoever's in the garage will have space to pull out. And that type of, uh, that type of a parking area behind each garage would still be allowed. You wouldn't be encroaching on the other person's driveway. It would all be natural. Just something for you to consider to make it a safer space back there.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. I, I think that's a good thought.
We will be able to provide only one, one parking next to the left side unit. The other side, we can't go because of the wetland setback.
We have an elevation situation there.
Can, can parking areas encroaching to the wetland setback driveway stand?
They can, it could just be, you know, a, an amendment to the, um, wetlands permit, but it drops down, it's like, they're going to be, so then you can be adding retaining walls and a whole lot of extra stuff, so.
Aren't they doing that already for the construction of the garage?
It's with the detention system. I'm just saying, it's, it's additional items in the, um, wetland setback, which I mean, obviously it's almost too void. You start thinking of wetlands, but it's, it's doable, but.
It's up to the advocate?
Yeah.
Okay. My recommendation here. I'll make a quick note that on the, um, file, uh, or at least proposed Downriver Site Plan PDF, Sarah, this is an issue for you. There is still a patio showing on that particular drawing. Uh, it doesn't show on the other drawings, but there are two patios, one on each unit.
Yes, I, I know, they, they made that change, um, today.
It's, it's the, it's the most recent, so the, the last, um, the most recently submitted, like, I believe it was half an hour ago, is the one that, that doesn't show the second patio.
This is Commissioner Chris, I have a question on the, um, uh, driveway easement. I'm on the, I'm here, by the, that's right. The, um.
I know, I see your feedback that there are, everyone on Zoom's having troubles. Just make sure you're projecting the voice, you're obviously in the light.
Thank you. That one, it indicates to me that, um, a little corner of one of the, um, guest parking spots will encroach very slightly onto the edge of the driveway, uh, easement. If I'm looking at the Downriver Site Plan PDF, uh, and I look at it, um, it doesn't seem to, it just seems to miss it. I wonder if I'm reading this right?
Yeah, so, um, that was another thing that, uh, we had addressed. We, we had gone back and forth on these, on these plans quite a bit to try to make it so that we were, um, really not affecting that driveway at all. Um, in, in the survey that I have pulled up right now, um, yeah, it's, it's right on the edge of it, but it's not encroaching.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
But to your, to your point, Mr. Chris, the survey from our K W has to encroaching on the driveway. Just a bit in that corner on the, um, on the guest parking lot that's closest to Main Street. And then the architectural plans show the check sheet two. It's just like touching it, just touching it there. It's, it's right on it. Say, I was, I, I thought this was one of the comments from last month's meeting was to make sure that all the drawings were coordinated and showing the same site plan.
If, on the, again, on, on the survey that I have here, um, or on Ravi's, um, plan here, it's not touching and it, and it won't be touching.
You're looking at the planning plan?
So I'm looking at what I have pulled up here.
Which is labeled what in your current plan presentation, please?
I'll have to, if you could just give me one moment, I'll log into the portal so that I can look at the same document you're looking at. However, we're not, the, the plan that we're going to move forward with and, and we're happy to make it a condition of approval, um, the driveway will not be touch, or will not be encroaching onto that and, onto the neighbor's driveway whatsoever.
Yeah, they're looking at your architectural plan, which is package D two and, uh, and the drawings that are online.
So I'm pulling it up, um. So if, if you look, if you look at the survey labeled two twenty-eight, twenty-four Downriver Survey, that's, that is the survey where we're not, where we're not, um, touching the neighbor's property there with the driveway or with the retaining wall. Or the neighbor's driveway, not the neighbor's property.
So you, so you submitted additional materials on February twenty-second. That's what's on file here. And there's one, two, three, four, six different PDFs in here, including a survey. And that's the survey we're looking at called six Downriver Road NC Survey. That one shows your parking area is still overlapping your neighbor's driveway.
Yeah, that, that's not the survey we're going to be using, the survey we're using is, um, the, the survey we're using does not touch the neighbor's driveway. And it's labeled, it's labeled two twenty-eight, twenty-four, uh, Downriver Survey PDF.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder if the, um, different documents submitted, some of which were very late, whether it might be best to continue this this time, we have any final, final steps?
I'm, I'm sorry, I have to request, now, the, we have final drawings here, um, and none of them...
We don't have final drawings, yes, you're asking for our permission to approve something, we don't have them, they're not on the record, you have an easement that is not completed, many of the matters that we raised last month have not been addressed, so your desire to submit them at our point of meeting is not helpful to the commission.
And I, and I apologize for that, that, you know, we've, this is my first time dealing with the commission, but we, you know, we are happy to, um, we're happy to make it, again, in a, a condition of the approval to, um, that we will have a signed easement, and we will have, we will make it so that the driveway, our driveway does not encroach on the neighbor's easement. Um, but we are, we are far behind on this project. And, and it's, and I, and I know that...
We can't fix the fact that you're being far behind on the project, that's not our purview.
And I, and I to, I fully understand that.
Let me finish, please.
Yep.
Information that you provided was both last month and this month, and evaluate whether it's complete and correct. And last month, multiple commissioners identified discrepancies in your drawings that did not correlate between drawing and drawing, and we asked you to have them corrected. It hasn't been correct. The drawings that are on file, that were submitted last week, are still not correct. I understand you submitted something half an hour ago, but that doesn't file, I'm sorry. So, I don't want to bother the rest of the commission, but I agree with Mr. Bassman. I, I think we should continue this to next month, or whenever we can hear it next, and allowing the opportunity to reconcile and correct all the drawings in your package, so they all show the correct information.
I'm, I'm, I'm really asking, uh, I'm at the mercy of the commission here, we, we will make, we will make sure that the, that the drawings, we will make sure that our driveway does not encroach upon that easement, and we will have a signed easement, um, and, you know, I, I will bring in all of the hard copies showing that, that driveway will not encroach, um, if, if the, if the commission could please consider making it a condition of approval.
So I would recommend maybe taking a straw poll right now, just how many commissioners feel that they need to put in reconciled to make a decision, or how they cannot, I don't know, I'm trying to think of that quick question before we do that. So Sarah, do you think we'll allow maybe writing that in the court of law permit, if you get your own, your own example?
Can I also add, prior to being the straw poller, some other issues that will have to be resolved before they come back? Uh, would you, I don't know?
I think you should probably have told you, I do have a question.
Um...
I'm going to squeeze into your mic.
Oh, sorry. We don't have to turn these things on anymore, right?
No, I turned them off.
Okay, um, can you put that rendering, that, that corner rendering you had on before, of the, of the image of the improved, um, design? Yeah, there you go, alright, so, uh, well, that's somewhat improved. It doesn't, it's not reflected on any of these plans. It's not reflected on A O two, A O three, A O five, A O six.
Yeah, my comment is that way.
Okay. Uh, so while the rendering may be better, which I can debate with you, the, um, the, the condition is not reflected anywhere in the drawings, at all. And, and that's something you need to, to do, so that we can review prior to approval. Secondly, on the changes you made, there's certainly a, a good beginning to, uh, addressing that quarter, uh, and, and we, we would all agree safely, it takes importance, don't just about anything else. But, plus, uh, the safety is a bit of a false argument in terms of addressing the quarter, in that when you look at the plans themselves, the, the building on the west could be entered from the main street very easily, and when you analyze your plans, that's, that's kind of something that's normal without any magic whatsoever, uh, which we then give it a streetscape, which it doesn't happen now, though they are better. As far as the discussion of parking, I actually think parking where you have it, as it's designed, it's going to be really tight, as Dan was suggesting, but I think it's good and that it's out of sight, so I, I like the way that works. But I think that we should try to improve this further, we should try, we should try to, uh, address this streetscape issue I just mentioned, and whatever you do, it needs to be on every single plan that you present us, and it's on none of these plans.
So, you know what, well, it's Gary speaking again, wh- while we do appreciate the fact that you're concerned about the main street's streetscape, it's a Downriver address, it's not a Main Street address. So we've actually, we've actually addressed the fact that, that the elevation from that side, the Main Street side, does look better. The, we, we've, we've taken down the trees, so there's not a wall of trees that, there, we've included a picket fence, and, and if I'm not mistaken, and Sarah could correct me if I'm wrong, everything that we, that we've done, uh, is, 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 uh, you know, conforms to the, the, to the zoning. So, uh, I, I mean, we, we have an issue with, with one set of plans that's not showing, uh, you know, the, the, the fact that we moved the, the driveway back, that is our property, in the first, in the first place, we did provide an easement, but even to satisfy it even more, we, we moved things so that it's not encroaching her driveway, which is on our property. So, we've done these things, and, and, and we feel that we've, we've, we've addressed all of the issues besides the fact that one plan is not, uh, is, is not, you know, being reflected in, in your package. So, I mean, a, a, are you guys, are you guys wanting to table this for another thirty days?
You're not, you're not listening to what I said, I won't go reading if you're what I said.
Well, it's, it's very hard to hear you, for some reason, I, I mean, it sounds like, uh, you know, we have very little sound here, I don't know if anybody else who, who's on the Zoom is having the same problem, but, I mean, we, we're literally with our ears up to the computer.
Yeah, same thing here, too.
We're trying to, we're trying to, you understand?
Uh, uh, no, we can't, there, there's no change, and our architect has the same thing, so it's, it's a technical issue, you know, y- on, on the part of the, uh, y- y- you're in there.
Governor, they need to know what to do before we adjourn, so I guess, none of these plans are reflective of that, uh, rendering.
Well, again, the, the re- the rendering, if the, the landscape plan is the plan that we're going to follow exactly, the renderings, the, the, just to give a, a broad idea of what we have in mind, um, I apologize that that serv, that we, you know, were a little late on submitting all of the files that, with the survey that wasn't on, on the drive, that didn't encroach on that driveway. But we will, you know, again, we're, and I know it's not on a problem of the commission's or anyone else's, but we are very far behind. We will meet any requirements, um, that are, that are laid out, um, we will make sure to, to do so. Uh, but, but we are, we're really, we're requesting that this please be, um, a, a condition of the approval, that we come with a signed easement, um, and that we, that we address that, that driveway as, as it's been addressed.
Now, if you take a look at the drawing package, uh, from the February twenty-second submission, the materials submitted on February twenty-second, there's the two twenty-one, um, Six Downriver Road Architect Plans, do you see that one?
Looking, you think, site, the site plan, I say six, six, Six Downriver Road?
Yeah, if you go...
Eleven twenty-one, is that the one you referred to?
Uh, no, if you go down, there's additional folders at the bottom of the deck. One says materials submitted to, to...
Yeah, okay, got it.
Expand that.
Yeah.
And then there's one called Architect's Plans.
Alright. Which is pretty good.
Mm-hmm.
Or fixable.
So if you look at that and look at sheets eight, ten, and A eleven, specifically A, A, ten, I think it is, yeah, A ten, is the house closer to Main Street that shows that elevation?
Alright, give me a second. It's been, uh, short period. I, I see the elevation, and we're hard to reflect on the plans.
The plans, correct? I think so.
Questions, sir?
Yes, the, the left side elevation is, is reflected on that plan there, yes.
I mean, the only thing I can think of is that those, um, articulations of the facade, the little gabled door,
Yep.
they're co-planar with the rest of the facade, maybe? I don't know. Question, is that correct to the applicant?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
The facade changes you've made on that elevation, see on the, the rendering that you have there?
Yep.
It makes it appear as though the, the two-story gabled bumpout facing Main Street
Yep.
It looks like mostly it's just that, that it's a bumpout, but according to your architect's drawings, it seems that it's all co-planar, that it's all flat.
It is, it is all flat, yeah, the, it's all going to be flat, that's correct.
It looks like, because we can show it. And that, that's, that's the argument I'm making.
Yeah, you're right.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
So the, the plans are not being adjusted to reflect the, uh, the, uh, rendering itself, though?
No, the rendering is not what we're, we're building off of the plans, not the rendering. The rendering was just, uh, just, uh, kind, to give a feel for what we were gonna do, I was debating whether or not to use the rendering in the presentation. Um, the building plans are what we build off of, the surveys are, are what, you know, we, we need to, we, to get our approvals, we need to build within setbacks, where if, if they get our approval, we need to make sure that, um, we have a signed easement, and that the survey shows, and the, and the plans and the site plan show that we're not, we're not encroaching upon that driveway at all, which we're not, we're building a fence along it and adding, um, and adding trees, then, then we will happily do that, um, and, you know...
No, I think we're talking the applicant's comments, you said that you improved the, the, uh, what, what, the, uh, the Main Street side of the west building by doing the kinds of things...
Oh, are you, are, oh, I think, I, you're asking if, you're saying that the plan is the same?
Will you tell me what I'm asking, okay? You, you said you showed the rendering, you said you improved Main, that facade on Main Street in this way. And, and my response to that was, yes, you did some improvement, I agree. But then when I look on the plans, it doesn't show this at all.
Right, so if you look at, so if you look here, um, on my screen, the bottom elevation, that, that was the original elevation, we, we deleted, Sarah can, um, confirm, the original, uh, submission of the architectural plans are, I imagine, I guess they're not in there, um, they were deleted when we added the new ones. This was the, the, that original elevation, um, our architect can also confirm that, this, this is our revised.
Okay, sir, we, we both agree on that, what I'm saying, I'm saying again, is that the revised elevation is not shown on the plans, the plans, plans being individual plans, first floor, second floor, roof, rooftop. Those have not been changed to address your new elevation.
No, these elevations are not projecting out, it's in the same plane with the, whatever the plan shows, this is the trim work on that wall.
Yeah, my role, I have... Right, well, two things, I, what I heard is that there's no projection that is co-planar.
Look at the roof.
I understand, which makes the rendering not very relevant, because the rendering shows it projecting. And then on the flip side, your roof plan is not accurate, showing the new element that you added, so the roof plan wasn't corrected.
The, yeah, the, the building plans are what we're building off of, um, you know, the, again, the rendering...
You don't seem to understand it, we, you're saying that you need an approval to move forward, and you're gonna build off the building plans. The only way we can make a valid judgment and either approval or denial on, on application is if the drawings are correct and reconciled.
And, and the ar, the architectural plans are correct.
They are not, the roof plan is wrong.
The, the, the roof plan, Ravi, I'm sorry, can you, what, how is the roof plan wrong?
It does not show the changes you made to the side elevation order.
I'm, R- uh, Ravi, Ravi, when you, when you revised the plan, did you revise the framing plan as well, or did you only do the revision to the, uh, elevations?
Only the elevations and the flo- elevations, basically.
Yeah, so, so the, so it was done to the elevations, but obviously, those will be, those, those, the entire set of plans will be adjusted, you know, to, to, to meet what's been approved. He, he just, uh, the architect just went in and addressed the concerns of improving the elevation on that side of the building. So obviously, we'll have to, uh, uh, you know, we'll have to address the framing plans to match the plans that you guys approved. So what, we're, at this particular, uh, uh, are, are, the plans go to plan review to the building department, right? The plans are gonna go to, to plan review to the building department, and, and when we submit those plans, it'll be a complete set of plans that match what we've, what, what we've shown in that elevation.
Yes, sir, this is Commissioner Chris, what I, what I'm wrestling with, and I suggested, when I suggested, which is why I suggested perhaps continuing this to the next meetings, so we can have a consistent set of plans, is that my experience has been that the commission is hesitant to end up doing drawings during the commission meeting, and then deciding it on the fly, and what we prefer is a final set of consistent drawings that we can comment on, which I don't see here. I, I'm personally not against the houses facing Downriver Road, I don't know, I'm not against that. Uh, but having a consistent set of plans where everything lines up would be useful, because otherwise, we'd be here for a while trying to figure out exactly which is right and which is wrong, and how to adjust them. And that's something I'm not sure we're really prepared to do, what we would...
Well, I, I, I could, I could, I could really, uh, I mean, I respect and appreciate what you guys are saying, and I, and I understand, you know, that, uh, that you guys are looking for a cohesive set of plans. We, we, we did not think that you were concerned about framing plans, we thought that you were more concerned about the elevation and the way that it, that, that the changes that were made and the way that it looks from Main Street. So, we didn't know whether or not it was gonna get approved, so for us to go ahead and, and start changing all the framing plans, we didn't think that that was a necessary step.
The only, only thing that's missing is one dormer over the garage, garage, garage floor area, that bay.
The commission's so low, we're not talking about ready plans, I don't know why they're talking about ready plans, these are architectural plans, they're not consistent with the rendering. When you come back next time, like, all of the...
And...
To be consistent, and what we want to be, have to be. Okay, I think, I think we need to move on, and we've discussed this issue.
So I would just still want to say, if, if they don't want to continue the application, they do not have to grant to continue it, and that's up to the applicant, so they can choose their own faith, whether they want to continue and leave it open, or they can vote it, it's up to the applicant, just, just to clarify.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Sarah?
So, you've heard the commission's feedback, um, you never did take a straw poll, whether commissioners have that information or not, but regardless of that, it is up to you, the applicant, to decide if you want to close the hearing tonight, and have the committee vote, or to leave it open until next month. You have to grant me, expect you to continue, so it's up to you.
So, so is, is it, the, so is the commission's against us, against making the driveway? Um, because it seems that the concern here is, is the driveway, um, encroaching upon the neighbor's, uh, driveway, and, and the easement. Um, and I understand what you're saying with, with the, with, there's a concern of, there's, there's inconsistencies, but if the, if the main concern, if the plan, if it was consistent, and what we're proposing is okay, um, you know, we can only do so much to the side elevation. And I, and what I do understand is, the, is, is the driveway issue, but I mean, we, you know, if, we, we'll make sure that we can meet any... But I mean, we, you know, if, we, we'll make sure that we can meet any of the, any of the requests from the commission for the, to, to have that driveway easement and to make sure that it doesn't encroach.
Understood, would you like to continue the meeting next month, or would you like to just close it and vote on it this month for time?
Well, I suppose if, if the, if the consensus is that it's gonna be denied, then I'd like to continue it.
Okay.
So we're continuing to march on, Sarah?
We'll continue to the next month, then. And we will, we will gladly reiterate exactly what we want on the drawings and correct it, so that you have the opportunity to correct everything and submit it at least five days before next month's meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we'll continue that for next month, that's St. Down River Road. Uh, three seventy-seven, uh, St. Luke's, uh, they pull, they pushed to, next, March twenty-sixth, so they're in March twenty-sixth meeting. Uh, Frog, twenty-three Frog Time, that's full business, new business, we had, uh, twenty-three.
Just, just in case, I'm completely wrong, from the others, next one.
Correct, twenty-three Frog Time Road has also been pushed to next month to the March twenty-sixth meeting. Okay. Um, then we get into new item number five, which was discussion and consideration of the PNC Commission to amend zoning regulations dated June sixteenth, two thousand and seven, amended November tenth, two thousand and three, to amend sections three point four of the permitted accessory structure in section three point seven B, dimensional exceptions. Complete copy of amended file, it's a, so, so link, has everyone had a chance to look at those? Cut the, uh, the revised language. Uh, Mr. Here?
Um, I'm here texting you this.
Yeah. If you're online, yeah, under, uh, opening commission applications, text me, and propose to amend it. Everyone have it over in front of them?
Text special move. Oh, we're both texting them.
Yeah. Sarah, you wanna go through this and explain it?
So, this is essentially, think about this as three separate items that you can either approve all of them, deny all of them, pick and choose, because it's three separate things, just to try to keep the shape in your mind. Um, so the first relates to specifically minor detached accessory structures. Um, and as we see in the regulation, that specifically means one tool shed, playhouse, busy boat, or similar detached accessory structure that does not have a permanent foundation, has no plumbing or electrical service, will be used for equipment, and does not exceed two hundred square meter area. So every single property in a residential zone in a region is allowed one of those, with power a permit. It also is excluded from building coverage in our regulations, so these are not regulated whatsoever. But our regulations state that if it's located in a front yard less than a hundred fifty feet from the street, it requires a special permit, and it has to meet accessory building setbacks. So you've noticed recently, and also this is another historic issue with other planners, that trying to regulate these, when it's not required to have a permanent liability code or, or, so no regulations, we run into issue where these structures are getting this setback, now for three years, they're legally not conforming, so they.
They're legally.
Not legally, legally not.
They're legally got it.
So having this regulation is a little counterintuitive, especially the front yard, hundred. But we're saying that this, this structure is so insignificant that it doesn't need a zoning permit, but we're gonna make a comment here as a whole, I just, it seems counterintuitive. The special permit is double the cost of the zoning permit, like, to be just an example. So I'm proposing that we exempt it from needing a special permit, and I am going a step further in saying that it doesn't need to meet accessory structure setback requirements. Again, this is just for one structure, it needs a second one in property, and it's not a permit, and also comply with the requirements.
Sarah, a question on that, when you say, I, I see you cross out a few of them, but, um, we're taking that out, but we're, we're even talking about. I don't, I understand, I can force it twice, it's really important, but.
So I mean, that, it, it gets complicated, because it's, it's all about the reservation, so like, twenty-three, two, remember the patio discussions you all had, should that be setback, should it not? You know, it's another thing you regulate, but you've got a lot to debate whether that should be setback or not, so. I think that somewhat of it, like, it's something, somewhat of a game for innovation, there's no sense, obviously not synergized. You know, it's even less permanent than a patio.
By the way, you did two hundred or two hundred and fifty, you said two fifty, it says two hundred and fifty.
I mentioned six two hundred and fifty. So that is item one, um, just for example, to see, um, what I'm talking about. So up on the screen, um, essentially, and everybody can see it, so this is where the street view, there is a shed that is technically in a front yard, because it's on a lot, that should have got a special permit. Let's see, like, this is a large portion of the space. But so, I mean, we're talking about, this is what, this is the type of structure we're talking about. Does this need a special permit? So in this zone, technically you're supposed to be ten feet from, it's supposed to be twenty-five feet from Old Stanford Road, and then ten feet from the back property. If it's seven feet from the back property line, or if you live in a really bad home or the other, if it's fifteen feet, so twenty-five feet to Old Stanford, and that, that's there. Is it earning the property values? So that's.
What happens if the neighbor, what happens if neighbors say, hey, that's your question, that's your question back.
Also, that's where this regulation comes in, if it's more than three years, say sorry, can't do anything about it, and then, um.
But if it's not, if someone decides to put a shed on their property and someone complains a week later, and they are, then they put a shed within two feet of the property, though.
So that's where the, where the discretion comes in, um, that we have to evaluate, is this, you know, is this zoning violation causing the risk of activation property, or is it just purely part of the, for their ongoing neighbors to use it to make use of it, or retaliation, like, these are all different ways, because while we do enforce our regulations, around our regulations, we, we don't enforce everything, because it is all very subjective, you know, a reader will spend ten hours on a page, and how, is it actually that good, or is it?
Yeah, but, I mean, the view of negatively impacting could be really, how like, if the neighbor painted, or if a guy sees the shed and just, uh, torque off the neighbor. But I, I tend to think that this is probably, I mean, maybe we should be amending this, but I think that to, if, if we change this, somebody could put one of these in their front yard, correct?
Yes, you can put one, but again, I think, I think, thing to keep in mind is, how many people would want to put something like this in their front yard? I don't, I don't know if anyone is necessarily challenging that to do this.
Yeah, yeah, but we, we're gonna remove a regulation that protects them from doing it and generating more neighbor, a lot more. I, I mean, in my opinion, I think the biggest issue we had with this regulation was a hundred fifty foot dimension, and how it affected whether it be a corner lot or regular lot or whatever the case may be. I don't think there's ever been any questioning of whether or not the accessory structure should or shouldn't be in setbacks, side yard, rear yard, front yard setbacks. I don't, I think those are sort of a, an assumed, um, safety gate for anyone buying a property in town, to which they assume and understand that the setbacks are there for a reason, prevent people from building too close to their property. And even, that's sort of the global view. Um, I think maybe the correct is, I think correctly amend this regulation is to leave the compliance with yard requirements, front side rear, and maybe rephrase item D, so that it's not located beyond the front of the building, uh, front of the home, front yard, primary, primary front yard. So in a case, for example, in a case like the one you have on the screen, even though it's a corner lot, the location of that shed, as long as it was within a side yard and rear yard setbacks, or in this case, front yard and side yard setbacks, and it was, um, beyond the side elevation of the side facing the road with the fence, it would technically be in compliance.
You're saying it was that, so that, that could just go to, some people talked about later, so you're, you're thinking that these are a minor detached accessory structure exempting a corner lot, but it's located in an area that functionally exists inside yard?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll make it all that, I'll, I'll part that.
Yeah, part that.
So I will just say, clear, Sarah, like the commission, I, I, you understand this. Until a major, if there's no way to enforce it, because there's no permit, twenty-three yard.
Correct, so these are just health developments, up in, somewhere back there.
Right, so they're not required to, you know, permit, so, so, um, so I will, I did your point, that. I am just going to, you know, say this, um, to make sure you're all aware of it. This is, this is an issue with this office and space, which being placed in the middle and they were in disputes for many years, which have never, you said not necessarily leaders placing human retaliation, but the office has a lot of elements to neither the disputes where, oh, they have a shed that's not complying, we're gonna do something about it. It's happened in multiple instances.
Where, which is why I think leaving the yard requirement, the setback requirement in there, would help, would help them.
I'm saying the opposite, hundred.
Really?
Yes.
I, I think that for the, that, that our property, we need to leave that, so that they have some ability to not have it. Because not to be viewed as, as, as helping people not get the message. And having a rule there is, is used, and if somebody falls into play, uh, and, and, you know, right on property, right? Or right in front of yard, that's pretty terrible.
Okay, so next option, um, so this is where we started, I'll give you a couple of special permits that you guys, quickly, where, oh, we're leaving a garage in my front yard, that's not a fee from the property. But before I get into the details of that, I want to just, um, make sure we're all on the same page about what a front yard is. So, Adam, what about front yards, just for everyone to understand, and a front yard is essentially all of this space that exists in between the front lane of the house and its elevation to the street. So this diagram up here just shows for a very small square block, so it's, so let's say the front yard setback is forty-five feet, and your house is sixty-five feet from the street, the front yard is sixty-five feet long. So, so keep that in mind, and then for corner lots, because this, you have two front yards. It's everything, and all the street coverage, so that's where it gets complicated, any questions on that?
Do you want to re-bear it on corner lot?
You do not get two side yards.
Okay. Remember, these tend to go through ZDA for waivers, as I remember, for hardship.
So, okay, so, long ago, obviously, we talked about yards, um, so essentially, option number two, I guess we'll call it, for, um, accessory structures, right, and all of it. Let's say you have a building seventy-five from the street. If you want to build a structure that's a hundred and forty feet from the street and at the front of your house, you need a special permit, so you just have to, I'm recommending you go with that seventy-five, instead of a hundred feet. At seventy-five feet, um, some complications, that means essentially, most houses in four-acre zones, two-acre zones, would not have their front door special, would not have a front door special permit to do that. About half or four one-acre lot, most of them, they're smaller, but still longer, needing a special permit to present to the commission, if they were constructed, constructed, and restructured in a front yard. And so, this regulation amendment just shows, this is our zoning regulation, all the different types of accessory structures, land-ys, only permit, and it was said instead of one fifty, seventy-five is a threshold, closer to seventy-five is a threshold to require a special.
Uh, what I'm hearing, uh, this period is that, if you're in the one acre of less zone, you're probably within seventy-five, so it's.
It's got a half of the one acre zone, it's straight to fifty, but everything's tall.
Yeah, so this is just for really larger plots, this is, it's a practical.
Exactly.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
And so, um, I have, I don't know if you all have seen examples of, um, you know.
Sure, that'll be helpful for me.
So, um, this is an example of the law in two acre zone, where now, in theory, they would be able to construct an accessory structure without a special permit. So this is just what it is on PIS, and I want, you know, the home is about a hundred and twenty-five feet away from the street, and I want the seventy-five to lie, and this is on the, the street view, the blue X, which I can zoom in and show you, um, essentially there backwards, in the lane of the house, they could build a big garage or something, less than a thousand square feet, really covered, that, that all triggers a special permit again. Um, so that's, that's an example of where you could see an accessory structure popping up without a special permit, whereas right now, they require it.
You say accessory structure, you need a shed, up to a house, you're going to have to feed, this, this thing has a foundation.
Yeah, we, we, I, I, okay. So essentially, everything in the zoning regulation that's allowed by zoning permit, that would go seventy-five feet or more, that's ours, that was, that's, that's what this is saying.
Yeah.
Um, and then.
We're, we're all going through this, um, application that here, um, about a year ago, on, um, um, what was it called? Which one, which one, on Wicker Circle, you gave me that, where it was the barn, it's a corner lot, and it was a pretty fat two-carb barn, and it was within that hundred and fifty feet, had a regulation that in place, or the modified, modified regulation that in place, they would have not needed this right now. And that was more than enough setback for the road from all directions, what basically would have come to those.
And so this is just another example of a property that got a special permit, a hundred and fifty years ago, exactly for this, where the garage is eighty-five feet from the property line, and that is the whole thing, and so, I'm not gonna zoom in right now, but very much, like, when you see it a little bit.
All right.
I'll make you see it, but so, you know, it's, this is, this is the type of structure.
Yeah.
Um.
Can you say accessory structure, this option meaning dwelling structure?
No, not, so a D, accessory, one, you need a special permit, so that's what this will be.
Accessory structure is not an EBU, is it?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
So that's.
EBU is still that good.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, this is Sarah, the point of, if we're using a hundred and forty, seventy-five feet, then it would be more application, it's a street of approvals, they could go in permits as opposed to, that is a half.
Correct, you say, the, the time that this happens.
So we're diving down the asshole, Patrick.
Correct, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
Our, our, yeah.
Correct, yeah.
And because, again, um, you've had seventeen applications like this in the last two years, you've approved fifteen of them, and the two that got denied would not, kind of, except based on the way out of structure, it's right. So the ones you would have denied would have still gotten, to be fair. And, um, yeah, so that's, this is option two, there was one other option, uh, that I, that I'll, you guys, I'll call.
Yeah.
So this is getting into corner lots and rear lots, um.
So it's in the last page?
Yes, so page five, so.
The, yes. The, yes.
Right. So, first and foremost, something to consider, one, if you are looking to really on this specifically, do you want this to only be accessory structures and two or three, so you think that has to work with rules? Or are you comfortable with it if you think that, and you know, you've got that option today as well? But so this is essentially saying that this rule does not apply to accessory structures located in the front yard on a rear lot, and it's also respecting accessory structures located in a front yard on a corner lot in languages, as in zoning regulations, so a corner lot is specifically a lot that includes two intersecting streets. So if a road curves that can increase, that's a part of a lot, they just don't have to come in. So this is just white out shade and being street corner, right there, not with Wicker Circle, he's like, you create. Um, so it's saying that structures located in the front yard within the area that functionally exists kind of as a company side of the front yard, so that would be determined by pre needs or itself. You got a plan, they would have to prove to us that, yes, assumptions of their front yard, trust the people that produce it. And then, so further, we're, you know, the neighbors and everything, if they're getting that exemption as a corner lot or a rear lot, that it's going to be screened from the street, and it's even, and saying, or other things, buffer, and then all exterior lighting, structure, show, I think, through that, or. And so those are the also two conditions, um, that were on, you know, the rules over the last year, and it's even like, so that's what I.
We just had a corner lot twenty minutes ago, and you're saying, and he had a screen, a main screen. Are you saying if we had a little bit of extra room, you could put a, you could sneak a spoon in there?
No, not that, not that.
How many, is this for all size properties?
This is for all size properties, and so let me jump to the examples. So, this is probably, so this isn't the few that is known already in downtown, um, this is what we're talking about. So this, I know I was gonna say something for another, but, but, um, you see, so it's, I think that's, and then, how bad?
And what do we need to allow here, like, garage?
Just a garage.
Just garage, not a store?
So that's up to you.
Yeah, that's what we're getting, we're excited about, is the fact that people could sneak swimming pools into places that could be viewed.
Right.
On water.
I stand very much against sports facilities being allowed, because they tend to generate noise and more visual impact, so I would not.
Okay, so then.
Let those off.
So the, the language that I have is accessory structures, excluding public recreation facilities.
Yeah, I get it, it's amazing, yeah, do you need to define?
No, that's in the regulations in the zoning permit sides, so that, um.
So, luxury facilities will include, now, you've limited to pools, sports.
Tennis court, paddle, paddles, tennis courts, swimming pool, or similar facility, we know about, or how are they, right? And then we go. Should we add that to the section?
Tennis.
No, no, I mean, you already heard it.
He says tennis court, paddle court, or.
Or similar facilities, we have that, capital of, someone.
That's, so, the, the playing court.
Yeah.
Pedro ball, they're.
So, I have a question, um, I agree with whatever you're saying, that those should not, those should be considered as a trend, but would, uh, people have some. Well, how else would you see an accessory structure, um, under zoning permit, secondary recreation structures? People have source infrastructure, so I guess my question is, we also might, we. I mean, to me, a recreation structure comes, I want to go with a garage. Okay. And then the recreation structure blocking, you would, who would be in the street, so. I don't think you'd. I don't think you'd do that much different with a garage.
I just have a drafting question, what do you mean by function exists? I don't, you don't find that anywhere else in zoning regulations? Somebody who's kind to read this, interpret it, and understand what that means, that's pretty interesting. Unless, unless you have an example that you could say, you know, like, do a little illustration, this is where a function exists. You know, this is a front yard, this is the rear, side yard.
So I mean, that's a very, very point, so I don't think functionally that it exists. Anywhere specifically in the regulation, I like to ask, functions as a side yard, and, um, or, you do have a side yard that we should not have to deal with.
Right, but I'm, I'm just thinking from a, right, if a corner lot's doing that for the yards. So it's only side yards? Can it just be rephrased that it's located in an area that needs to be property side or rear yard?
No, that would. I mean, I think we're talking about, how the houses grant, so the houses, if you weren't, well, if you're in the south, that they get corner lot, maybe it was on the back, but in general, like, including.
Right, or you want by the other. Something, it's often, accessory structure, you know, you're probably, this is this way, or this way, to. A, use a craft, a, a lustered, you know, finding, or kind of rephrase, or something like.
So, you know, nothing should be made in a garage. So, I, I can attempt to.
Okay.
So then we won't change the wording of that.
You mentioned the fifteen out of seventeen, this thing, I thought that was interesting. Can you give us the distinct kind of impact of the second, uh, condition? How often does this side, the intersecting, uh, side yard?
Sure, so, um, it would, um, the rear lot would technically save one application last year, um, but since it's a public yard, and you have a lot of your approvals have been, and accessory structure located in front yard, that's, like, I'm not going to pay from the street, and it's over covered, so what happens a lot is, when people come in with their ideas, and you tell them, okay, well, they're coming to the commission regardless, so they have a front yard. So then I think people tend to develop their plan, because they're coming to you guys regardless. So, if we're allowing these hundred and fifty foot plant, I think you're going to see structures that are less than that. They're not going to want to trigger, so, um, I'm, I'm saying all this because they'll want that coverage, that makes them have the, the coverage, and have to be broad, broad, but I think, had it, had that company, well, I'm familiar, that they may have less of their structure, because.
I just want to talk about the, uh, the, the second, uh, example, so whether we, we don't see, we're not going to say this all in a lot of.
So you could say, we sell, over the last year, it's been a loss.
Yeah.
And then on rear lot. So, so I just want, I asked you this, because I'm, 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 it's clear that you're saying you don't need a special permit and you need these conditions, but it's not clear, it's all, I mean, it's, it's higher than you're going to permit. So to me, it's implied, I think, because these uses are listed as, section three point four, that you're going to permit, so.
No matter what, you're trying to get us on, you're moving forward into building.
Yeah.
Then all this is still a, a coverage, actually.
The boss.
Yeah. So you got, or permit, or, 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 or. Okay, so we now, I think we have agreement on the fifth page, and he's got exemptions for the corner lots. Will include graphic or I D, then jumping down to the beginning. We have, I think we have clarity on, uh, on our accessory structure regulation, we'll look at it. And we've been in the yard requirements, right?
I'm, I'm sold on, uh, corner lot, I don't think it's really bothering me, so I'd actually, like, I think these corner, these, uh, example, what I like, I mean, I'd like to see with this, I think that each one of the very eight, eight, if I just get to see them in front of the blocks, I mean, there's only been three, it's a lot of features, that I'd like to see.
So I'm going to push back just a little bit, that I think we're creating unnecessary hardship for homeowners of the corner lots. You know, um, is it that it's stress, how did?
Are we so stressful?
It's added, it's added comments, it's added time to the project, or, like, I, I personally think we're punishing residents that purchase corner lots.
Because they have significantly less buildability than their neighbors.
Yes.
That is a argument. They have two front yard setbacks and two side yard setbacks, but the two front yard setbacks are always greater than rear side. So I mean, that's, that's.
They have limitations.
And for a lot of people, they don't have to come with a special permit.
And I think we recognize that, we're, we're apt to say, you know, this is a hardship, and we're more apt to, to get this. But they wouldn't know that, no, that's a, it's a stretch, just the.
Because it's extra, it's extra coordination, it's more higher of the territory, you want to try to change it yourself, like, it's, we have a lot of conversations with homeowners trying to figure out what they're talking to, and, you know, it's just an actual thing, for now, to clear what's happening, you know, and, you know, improve the property.
So you feel strongly that we should, we should.
I feel strongly that you should.
I assumed that. I, I, the, I agree on everything except making people come to those permits, or sheds, that they will watch them all around, stick to their, in their own perfection.
And Art, just if I're right, you, you, nobody just said that the idea we're making the setback requirement to those sheds was set too far, is that we need that?
Yeah, yes, I think. So I have a. So you would have, you would have.
No, I would have through all of these, all of these changes, with the exception of the first one that we discussed. I think we need to keep the rules on setbacks.
Has it went to?
No, 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 yards and backs, yeah, because.
E, correct.
That's correct.
On purpose.
We are in agreement that there's no need for a special permit.
I would, I would.
Just making sure we're on.
Oh, no, you're asking. Do we need to vote on this?
Yes, and that, that will be at the end of the deliberation.
I would also note that, uh, we see, uh, behavior in town that is concerning this commission, we've got a change in that.
Exactly, if, if this fails, which you must be switching around.
Once it's gone, once it's. So, okay, let's say, can we share your opinion further on this one? Okay. So, into regular meeting, um, we may wanna, well, we, we're gonna continue to deliberate on this, but I think, uh, in order to, uh, assist the remaining applicants here for Nine South Avenue three sixty-five, we'll jump into those two items, and then circle back to deliberation on any of the remaining items that we've already discussed. So, next on the list here is Nine South Avenue, uh, upon application of merit, merit, or will, so.
Well, that's a little bit.
I was close.
Thank you.
Authorization for RV property LLC owners for site plan approval pursuant to section four point two, allow us common retail A zone at nine South Avenue lot team, uh, sorry, A fourteen-four, lot number twenty-three. This is the old, for everyone that doesn't know, this is the old Kenzie space on South Avenue. Come on, forward, um. Yes. You said, if I'm just here, if you're, you're close to the microphone, and give us your name and relationship with other, and explain.
Thank you for tonight, here is the Germans, my name is Marudan Susan, I'm, um, construction, general construction, and that's my customer, my client, and I try helping up on this project. He have about seven restaurants already, Indian restaurant cuisine, nice food, good food, and I try opening another one.
Send in restaurants?
Yes, uh, this is going to be the eighth one.
And then for everyone on the commission, um, this is the sixth, uh, sorry, the, uh,
I have the.
Under administrative actions, yeah, there's plans up on the screen, under administrative actions for today, it's the Nine South Avenue package.
Are you maybe finishing this, uh?
No.
But you will be putting up new signage, right?
Yes. Sign for the name?
Separate signage, correct?
You will need to apply for the sign, like, electrical plumber, gonna be next.
But that will be separate from this?
Yes. Only thing, in fact, outside is the gas tank, you have to put a, the propane tank outside.
Is Alkine Alley, correct?
Yes.
Is that changing, or going, or getting more bigger?
Oh, no, I, I didn't do.
You add a new one?
Yes.
Do you have any, um, any drawing or anything?
Yes, on the mechan.
Is where it's going?
Yes, it's on the mechanical planning, yes, all the way at the back.
This is more teenage?
Uh, not this one. And it's a mechanical drawings, according to the.
There are more, oh, sorry, um. We have a statement, we have the RV authority group's statement, authorization. It is, just within this, it says, uh, special, that's roughly two thousand customers.
Well, that's for the catering. The dining is going to be in between eighteen to twenty-five, twenty-six, depends on how the, how, not the how the fire marshal.
Twenty-six people?
Paper inside, for the dining, I don't think it.
Count, three seats, I miscounted. I don't think.
This is, ten, ten tables.
We're counting four.
Oh, sorry, full four, yes, it's, uh, there's only one exit for that place, so it should be under fifty, that's what the, under forty-nine. The help, the fire marshal is approving only for forty-nine, one with, one exit door, and he only one exit door there.
So it will be forty-five, not twenty, like, would you say twenty?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six?
Twenty-six, yeah, in, in between twenty-six to forty-four, that's, I don't know exactly how many both seat I can put it, but maxing is going to be forty-four, and in between twenty-six to forty-four people going to be dining for the table.
Also, sir, since bar, are you going to?
Yes, yes.
There's a, you can.
Yes.
I looked in the drawing in the back, I've seen the double door, actually, in the rear.
Yes, that's for, to the kitchen exit.
But have.
But the customer cannot get exit on that day, because if anything happened in the kitchen, they are saying, I need to be either, besides the front exit, and have another exit in order to get more than fifty people, including the employees.
And there's a mezzanine.
Uh, I see, right now, they have another floor on the back, so I didn't demolish or anything. If I can use it, if Sony is approving to get that place as a storage place, I can use it, that as a storage. If Sony is not approving, I have to demolish that one.
It's existing.
It's existing, it's like in the back, back area, after the kitchen. Trying to use that as a space for, uh, storage, but we don't know if the zoning and building department will approve it. If it is approving, I will use it, if they are not approving, we'll demolish it.
Does the plan, uh, for the propane tank to be, uh, installing, is that going to be on the side of the building, or behind?
Behind building.
Right, so there'll be.
There is.
Close the double door.
Yeah, uh, they have a space for the other two units, which one you're using, the propane tank, going to be the same place.
So.
I mean, the same area in the back side.
How many tanks, sorry, how many tanks is there now?
Right now, I think it is four.
Four tanks?
Forty.
Are all those four tanks for this?
No, for the other two units, yes.
And how many more tanks?
Two more, yeah.
And have you reviewed the tank location for fire marshal?
Uh, not yet.
Because they're very picky about the tanks.
Yeah, I would, I don't.
Have them, but they're very.
Yes. Yeah, I, I didn't go in, go to, to, uh. Yeah, I, I didn't go in, go to the, uh, fire marshal. But the.
Some context, um, they had some development for a new bar that was needed to get a full change. So all the building stuff that I've done, we did the fire marshal.
Yes, and the health department approved a fraud plan and everything. Health is a no, yes.
Did, um, the only thing I would ask, or did health department say anything about the bathrooms? And you have customers needing to go behind bar to get to the bathrooms? Do they have any concern about that?
No, because the, the hallway is three foot, I mean, three feet, they have it for the access for the disability person. And they need, if I have more than fifteen people in that building, they need to bathroom. And, uh, the case one has to be handicapped.
Yes.
Yes, that is according to the plan.
You have, the, the commissioner Chris, will the entrance to the building, does it being accessible?
I'm sorry, yes.
Entrance to the, to the restaurant, the alien accessible?
Yes, handicap accessible. Yes, it is.
And we're getting good, um, uh, sample, I think, uh.
Yes. Yes, yes, I'm sorry. Sorry, if you ever didn't.
If I'm leaving for the application for.
I really.
Uh, so that gave you best information. From a change of use, if you're at a kitchen, one of the things that comes up is the ventilation requirements, um, the, the back, um, the links to. We'd be adding, you know, put on the roof and is that been?
Yes, it, yes.
And structure and hold the.
Yes, yes, yes.
Is that documented?
Or the exhaust, or there's, it's a fight, like the hotel that is the most, I mean, they, they are really popular. Or those people are doing separate, uh, license for it. But the problem is, uh, once I started applying for the license and everything, they said the first is money has to be approved for that area. So we are first, first, if you are getting approved it, then everything will be there. Thank you.
So question, are you taking, making any changes to the side and one of your side?
Oh, same, 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 there was no changes in that one.
Well, you're not gonna use the campus.
Uh, no, not that one, but it, the size is gonna be the same.
Same type, fair.
Same, not same size, yeah, that is only the landlord is approving. So same size, same, uh, e- everything has the same letters anywhere.
Will you have that proceeding?
No.
Would, would it be table service or is this?
Yes, no, table service, yes.
Wait, so you want servers?
Yes. It's pretty around like, uh, Charles, two flat, twelve full-time employees will be there. And two employees must, they have that, uh, certified, uh, that, I put into the health, yes, you do have.
Uh, commissioners, any further questions?
Thank you. Never you say, yeah. So the problem was, we signed the leasing one like a three months ago, and we didn't know the problem with the, this part. Uh, I, I didn't know when the zoning has to be get a public hearing and everything. So once we get the uplay, then only we realize our, we have to go for hearing, change of reason, everything. But the landlord told me didn't need to get anything because all places is like that. So this is the one he's waiting for it, all the things are ready to do that, expecting like, uh, six weeks to build out. Most, most, yeah, most about six weeks to eight weeks to get them. It's very small, it's not big, yeah.
So you'll be on this now?
Yes, yes, I mean, everything is going, yes. Try and spring. Yeah, we have another, uh, restaurant is building in, uh, Long Middle Look Massachusetts. So we just done everything and he's the same builder, he's in the same place. Spring to you. Yeah, let's, let's jump, yeah. Ten minutes, so. Yes. Exit forty-nine? Forty-nine.
What are your plans for the alley, do you have, do you have an alley?
On the side.
Going to queue their corners up, waiting for their food or in the park there, or in the dumpsters there?
You have a side part? On the side, we, there is a road is there, on the.
The alley that goes into the back part?
Yeah.
Yeah, is that part of the lease?
No.
So you don't have access to the venue?
Back, yes, on the back, most, but on the side, no. And on the side, no? I don't, I don't have any access to that, there's not one. Uh, I don't have any access on that side. But, uh, if the fire marshal is asking for a kitchen more than one exit, the landlord is, will allow to make exit on back side of the kitchen. But it is not part of the lease right now.
I just wonder if we have, I expect you to be very positive, I experienced.
Thank you.
Huge success, I wonder, uh, if we have other successful restaurants in town, uh, the patrons tend to double park in front of them. Cause they just need to run in and pick up their food.
Uh.
And that, it occurs to me that because that alley exists, there's another option, you know, for queuing parks other than double parking. At that very busy intersection with more.
But in front, in front, uh, in front of my, that restaurant, the road and the next one is, there's a big parking lot thing. Crossed, yeah. Uh, ne- next to that, uh, gas station, there's a, a huge space, so hopefully, look at that space.
Of course, I am aware the water is right there and I think that success.
Not very, it's not part.
Hundred yards of yours, I still have a double park.
Yeah, I have one place in two-one-one Summer Street, Stamford, Connecticut. I'm having the same problem, the road is one way, there's no parking. Uh, getting the same problem, there's a small alley, alley next to my building, same, same problem.
I just encourage you to talk to your landlord about, um, ways to mitigate that problem. Cause nobody wants, you know, the crowd.
Yeah, I will, I will, true.
Maybe you can, you know, maybe you can work on a solution if that comes up.
Just, thank you.
Do we know if the alley belongs to this level? Or does it belong to the building owner or something else? I, I, I think, um.
I, I don't think so, because the reason is when, the time of demolition, we are trying to put a dumpster there. So he said put it on the back seat, so that mean, I, I, I don't know right now. Yeah, I, I don't know, and that look, uh, that alley, I don't think it is after night, no one is there to pollute.
It was commonly, and I don't think it's common, you know. Uh, it was commonly on one bank, two siblings, and then I think one of the siblings. Some of the buildings, and the owns the parking lot of the buildings, I don't think that, that owner of your building owns that.
On the base, no.
They gets part of the parking lot of the building, but, you know, that's, um, great.
According to G I S, it's not five, uh, nine, sometimes.
No, it's a different.
The building to the corner of Main Street, or Elm Street, South Avenue.
May have everyone. Alright, commissioners, any further?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, last but not least, three sixty-five, new school road modification, the private parking for us. Authorization for Grace Farms Foundation, great for the special permit modification. Eight point two, B point six, B point two. Allow for one-time opening of Grace Farms and exits on Monday, October twenty-first, twenty-two, twenty-four.
Thank you, good to see all of you again, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Uh, again, for the record, Brian Smith, I'm representing Grace Farms Foundation. I have Meg Healy and A.J. Conley with me from Grace Farms tonight. Uh, and this is really a, what I call a Monday problem. And that's because in the, in the special permit that you issued in twenty seventeen, there's a requirement that Grace Farms can operate and be open to the public every day except Mondays. And Monday is the only date that the London Philharmonic Orchestra, which is why we're hoping to hold the annual benefit to allow it to perform that night. It's the only night it can perform in Connecticut. It's going to, back to the UK right after that. It's on its first tour in over a decade in the US. And we, we did frankly ask the Philharmonic if they could do Sunday, Tuesday, any other day, because we wouldn't even be here before you tonight. But for that one issue of having a minor modification of the special permit to allow us the Monday opening. And it's a type A event under the regulations, which is one of our big events. Uh, and we, what we are offering is not only will we ask for permission to be open Monday, we will close to the public on the Sunday before and the Tuesday after to address any neighborhood concerns. So that's really the basis for, for our asking.
So just, let me, let me just jump in and give a little context, because. No one in the commission at the time, were you? You were? Yeah. So twenty seventeen, um, for the notification of the rest of the commissioners, um, we approved Grace Farms with ninety-nine or a hundred.
I'm there, you got it, four more or something.
Um, and many of those conditions, if not all, were, uh, in order to satisfy concerns of neighbors in terms of frequency of events, size of events, party, noise, all the emissions, et cetera, et cetera. One of the, um, compromise, one of the concessions that the apple made was to reach and have the facility closed on Mondays to give some relief to the neighborhood. Since Monday was not a heavy busy day, was not a, you know, a religious day on the weekend. And they could work around Mondays as dependent days for other things like basketball or, you know, church meetings. So it was, it was suggested on a part of, or a recommendation on part of the avenue that the commission could, or the commission was. Just a little context.
Thank you, yeah.
Any questions, commissioners, any questions, Mr. Sir?
Well, the question you was about to ask, when you just told us that, you just gave the, the answers to the question you was about to. I didn't, I, 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 I have any other questions? But I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I had no understanding that Monday has a restriction on it, and I'm trying to start.
One, one Monday, that's the. No, I, yeah, that, that's why, yes, it's just this one Monday, October twenty-first. And we're asking now because as you might expect, we, the London Philharmonic schedules day in advance and we need to be able to give.
In terms of the number of total events for a year, these are different classifications of small and large.
Yeah.
This would be one of the largest.
It's a type A, yes, yeah. Uh, yeah, it's actually, I think it's more than that, five hundred plus. We can only have six total, six events of that size in any one calendar year. And only two types of that events in any same month, so we're, yeah. Not changing anything at all about that, this will be counted as one of those six for the.
Events of any of the classifications, including type A, still exist?
Absolutely, yes, it's literally, as I said at the opening, it's a, it's a Monday problem, just this one Monday. And, uh, but we think it's a great opportunity, it's the only time that London Philharmonic be playing in Connecticut. Uh, and it's the end of this tour that they're having, I think they're kind, they're kind of getting all to us, so.
Mr. Sir, I just had a quick question.
Yes.
We've only spent a lot of time last year, a couple of related topics here. What it's aimed by not be, some of it makes from the opposite. If the community uses a place on Sunday, closing on Sunday doesn't particularly, um, relaxes, relaxes, doesn't particularly help anyone.
Well, we, because it's going to be a, a large, um, largest kind of event that we're gonna be having, we thought it would be appropriate that we be closed the day before and the day after, and, yeah, as, as far as, I mean, Sundays can be a busier day at Grace Farms, but, uh, with, uh, sufficient advanced planning, we can do this, and we thought it was appropriate to provide Sunday and Tuesday. And, and also, it's, it's quite a big event, yeah.
I was saying, you just thought it would be nice to do this.
Yeah.
Alley for the day, but you don't need, um, Sunday, for example, is preparation day to have this.
Well, I mean, I think, I mean, I'm sure that they will be preparing for this, uh, in part, I don't think it's, that's the, that's not the driver, yes.
I think, tough, can we, I, I, I mean, think of large events, big weddings, things that at least the ages have up. I mean, frankly, you could have this, that Sunday, it is a day to day, I don't think setting up, then you got breakdown, gap doors, that's at least a whole day event. So no matter what, I think, it means, I'm gonna pull it off effectively, even half of the clothes the day before and day after, just.
Yeah.
Not two days before and two days after, depending on exactly what the format is for the event, so. That strikes me as a gimme, frankly, as opposed to an offer, that, that it's, it's necessary in order to accomplish what it is you're hoping to accomplish. Second is, what you stated, if I understand you correctly, sir, is that, um, this would be a, a one-time thing. And that I, I'm challenged to prove essentially a spot zoning for a months in a life kind of event. A, a change that is more permanent, uh, I may be able to get to you, but for a one-time thing, I just, again, it's expensive spot zoning, which is something that is, um, something that would just as a void, thank you, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would respond to the, uh, with, I would, I don't think that this should be terrorizing as spot zoning, because it's, it's a condition of an approval of a special permit, it's not a zone change where you're putting a house in the middle of a, of a, another kind of zone where you're spot zoning a location. This is a use, and it's a use that we can do six days a week. We're asking for a change one time as a minor modification of one time only, to allow a very unusual event to happen. And the appropriate body to go to seek a minor modification of the special permit condition is this body, which is why we're here. I think that's, that's, that's the reason, uh, that we're, we're asking for this one-time permission as a minor modification for this one, uh, event in twenty twenty-four.
Yes, this is Commissioner Chris, again, and what you think that, this is such a moral, a lot of moving, the one done, which is what is being suggested. And, um, can I find it challenging to, uh, just, I'm wondering, since it's a practical matter here, you could have to close Sunday for stuff, and. Seems like a pity. I'm wondering about maybe a larger gesture to the, uh, neighbors, like, uh, some additional times for such an event, if the, um, facility would be closed, uh, and therefore much wider as sort of a compensation for a, a large event that was not allowed. What was the intention of that? Well, I mean, just clarify, it's allowed, you're there, it's just not allowed to the next. True, but it's a day issue, so whether it's a day issue or something else, it's a change that would be, so, now, so it's.
Yeah, I.
Quiet, it's like a day versus something else.
I, I understand the, the concept, but I think it, it's more than a gimme, because we, uh, Grace Farms has run a lot of type A events which are of this size. And not had to close the facility the day before, the day after to accommodate that, so a large, you know, organization and it has these events only six times a year, and that's all, it's, it's limited to that. And we're simply saying, and as I said at the outset, we tried to ask those, the Philharmonic if they could do any other day of the week. Literally, that's the issue, and, uh, so, yes, I mean, we, we, they, they would be operating, if they have a type A event, they have a lot of people working, but they don't close. but they don't close a whole facility. If it had been on a Tuesday, they wouldn't be closing Monday and Wednesday, they'd be a lot better. They would be closed Monday. So let's go to Thursday, for example. They wouldn't close Wednesday and Friday if they had a Thursday event of this magnitude. They might limit things to some degree, but they, they don't close. That's not what they do. So I don't think it's a giving. And the giving is that we're completely closed on Sunday and completely closed on Tuesday. Yes, it certainly facilitates all the things we have to do to have this event, but it's not. The event can be so extraordinary that it violates any of the conditions, and it, it doesn't. Because we said in the letter to, uh, in, in the submission, we anticipate somewhere between five hundred and seven hundred people. It's not, and, and Grace Farms is allowed to have up to twelve hundred people in, you know, in a day at that facility. So it's not usually large or, you know, a huge exception, so.
How old on that? Does anyone have to understand what magnitude it means? Now, Grace Farms has five, five hundred buildings. Will you be using all five hundred buildings? I have one question, so let's.
Oh, okay. Um, I'm not asking the, my colleagues that come forward who are, you know, with Grace Farms, but, uh, my understanding is that for the, the Philharmonic, which is, is, is it going to be using the sanctuary? The, the, you know, that's a location where they'd be, yeah.
How many seats is it?
I think it ha, I think it has, uh, seven hundred, I believe it's seven hundred.
So you're limiting your number of tickets to the site?
Yeah, we have to, yes, yeah, yes, of course.
Okay, what are the hours for both that?
Uh, it was, I believe, the, the guests would be, I mean, we'll, setup would be all day, but the guests would be coming in, it's between four and ten, you have to close it, you have to close it. And we're not asking for any exceptions to that, so. Yeah.
How many cars do you say?
I, I don't know, but we, the, if, the, we had to, we can only have up to two hundred and twenty-six because that's the maximum number of parking spaces. If we do that, we would have to close, if we use a facility and use it for all one event, it has to be closed to any other kind of event at the same time.
So how do you control that? Do you do the shuttles?
Yes, yes, we have a shuttle as one or the other of our conditions. At Vista New York, we have a shuttle service that has to operate. Uh, it's one of the conditions of approval we have. There, there's a whole list, if you look, if you were to, I believe, uh, I think, uh, Sarah Carey put it up on the, in, in your packet, but there's conditions of, yeah, there's, there's a whole list of, of, of conditions of, of activities and what must happen. So a type A event, uh, is when you have, you anticipate more than five hundred people. And so we only have six of those a year. And when you have the event, we have to have, uh, if we anticipate a certain number of people, we have to have police, we have to have, you know, our trained traffic control. Uh, we can only use, we have the, uh, parking, two hundred and twenty-six spaces, that's what we're allowed onsite that we could use those. And then we have to have shuttles and we have to have it, you know, arranged for properly. And we usually work with the town on, on the set out all times. And that's how they operate anytime you have the same kind of event. So it is, and so that's, that's why, uh, and that's how we operate. So the, so that's, I'm not sure what, you know, what other questions you have because I think that's, you know, that's how we do the traffic and the traffic control, so.
I just want to clarify, again, this type of event is, this is our manual basis. And it's, and rightfully, there's exceptions, but the permit is going to be about that, so I'm happy. I mean, only if they're, if they're before this Monday, so all those conditions, you know, I'm asking about. I appreciate the time you're taking, but they're all regular, they're all regular. And if it has, in the past, it means that how are they controlled?
Okay, I, I was trying to, to find the sort of idea used in terms of that, so that I was clear about what you was referring to and how, how it's confirmed. And I think would be such a more figure of how to, it's a point that I can, for, now, I have a question.
Yes.
Aren't you a church?
Uh, well, yeah, we have a church use on the property, yes.
How is that, uh, in terms of Sunday?
Well, the, the. Um, no, that's not, that's not the, uh, I think they, they continue, they're under a separate requirement so that they could have services on a Sunday without shutting that part of it down. But it's, because that's not part of the Grace Farms program, which is the nonprofit, so that. Yeah, I mean, we, but we can't have, yeah, right, right. But we can't have, you know, more than a certain number of people onsite at any one time. So that's, that's how that's controlled.
Um, just for clarification. I think we've probably, we've had a lot of, um, important questions. Commentary of, of Grace Farms in years. Um, so I just want to be certain, we're, uh, clear as to which one of the commissioners are voting here. Something, I heard you say you've raised five, a member there or?
But I'm not, you don't necessarily have, you remember, but I purchase tickets to events. And I, uh, because I think it's an extreme, good use of, uh, market, serious architectural elements as a cultural facility. Or take visits, visits there, like I do with the last class. Um, I think it's somewhat underappreciated, but I think you got where you're going.
Yeah, but you're, uh, for lack of better description, you're a parishioner of Grace Farms, or are you?
No, I am not.
Okay.
No, I would absolutely step aside ahead, so we, we probably, just want to be clear.
Um, second, we did receive a letter from, uh, Mr. Sutcliffe. Uh, Mr. Engel, did you read it?
Yes.
Uh, what's your opinion?
Uh, they have kept my, uh, voting on this. We heard that my local support, and I don't think local support. Uh, I have local support for many, for teenagers, and I don't think local support constitutes bias. I mean, I, I am locally supportive, I'm a big part of them, you gotta like. Uh, but I don't have a financial relationship with them either. I'm, I'm vocally, you know, I've been supportive of St. Luke's, but I don't have a kid there, I don't have a financial relationship with them. So, yeah, I'm going to continually vocally support, um, many of our nonprofits right now. And you don't, uh, have a financial relationship with them, and in order to, I, I have no fiduciary interest. So I'm going to.
More privileged parishioner.
Nor am I a parishioner.
Thank you. Just want to make sure.
And I like, like, if you can prove enough, I mean, I support lots of things, lots of things.
Uh, Mr. Sir? I have a question. Uh, the other objection, the social, whatever, about the implementation of marketing, um, regulations and that Jordan replied was, you know, it's not. So you're going to explain where that, where that comes from? I don't understand.
It's, uh, actually, the, the, when you read the letter that Attorney Sutcliffe submitted along with the, the, uh, opinion of, I guess, Mr. Poland, who was the, you know, expert that she was relying on. He was talking about the controversy that we've had with the zoning permits that were issued for the West Barn and the Operations Center, which are facilities, for those who are not as familiar, on the property that were, you know, for which we got building permits and zoning permits. And then, uh, the, uh, Mr. Marquados and, and Ms. Holm had objected in brought suit, saying that, to the, well, firstly, objected to the new Canadian zoning board of appeals, saying that that wasn't properly done. The zoning board of appeals said, no, we don't find any error. Into court, Judge Berger remanded the case and said, the question is whether it's an intensification of use. And that he remanded it not only to the zoning board of appeals, but back to you, to this commission. So if the last time we were here was before you, about whether what we were doing was an intensification of use. They're trying to argue in this letter that, that the parking that we have been permitted to have is insufficient for the uses that we already have. But this commission last year said in direct answer to the ZBA and to Judge Berger that what had been done at West Barn and Operations Center did not meet as an intensification of use. That was this commission's decision. And the Z, and the zone was sent back to the zoning board of appeals and they said, we agree. And that's going back to the court, it's, it's sitting in limbo because the court has to now do something with this remand of information. This is an opinion of somebody saying that, of this person saying there's inadequate parking. Nobody else has agreed. I asked Miss Carey if there was any zoning violations of parking, you know, if it had been issued to Grace Farms or has not been. And curiously enough, the, the last thing that Grace Farms had asked for, an increase in parking to meet the eighty-two put-in hill application that was before you, a year and a half, two years ago. Uh, this commission said, no, you have to, you, you have to utilize the parking you have. So in fact, at hand, ironically, the same people who were on pointing this claim out of increased need for parking were objecting vehemently to any increase in parking. So we have the two hundred and twenty-six, we're not asking for any increase. Uh, the argument comes because I think they're looking for something, frankly, to, to grasp these straws. That's my take on it.
One question. Question. Getting something, all these letters to the second gas, taxi district, very important companies, what's all that about?
Well.
Is it the submission, Mr. Remine?
Yes, that, that whenever, when you go through the, as, you know, I mean, when you go through the special permit process, you have to notify various entities. Uh, the town has to notify, uh, Jason, Ms. Palies, and we have to notify specifically, in this instance, it's First and Second Taxi District and the Aquarian as a requirement. And then it's up to whether the commission deems it a minor modification. And, but we have to, we have to do that upfront, within seven days of an application. That's before any other decisions are made about whether this should be a public hearing or not. So that's what we have to do, and we have to do it within a very tight timeframe. Yeah.
Mr. Sir, can you further? Do you have a couple of comments?
Well, thank you very much for your consideration.
All right, um, that's it for items for the night. Uh, we, uh, coming to the operation point, um, for the back to, first application, you heard Connecticut is, um, actually downriver road, there could be backwards, so we'll discuss it. Uh, next is, uh, the zoning amendments, regulations concerning the, uh, other, and some infrastructure. Um, we've already picked that back and forth, we've discussed, we've reached a one that is incredible. Uh, we need to vote on this, um, Sarah.
So, let me just, so everybody's gonna pay everything, and pay to, and then, um, you want to add traffic, or, um, is that the boss? So we're trying to, so do you have to think about what you, that's adding more, you know, regular? So, we're not, we're not all.
Well, is there a reading in words in that, or a page five, and a D, and not a paragraph?
Did you hear anything? So, so I mean, that's, that's your intention, that's your one, you just, we go a little bit off of the traffic, um, we table this out, I don't think we're very, just, we're, we're, like, we're having some of it. In the meantime, like, a little off, for, for, for that. So my recommendation would be, just like this, I, to get it, and just have it effective, a lot, just, just, you know.
You just best want to be, of course, you're.
So I, I'm supportive of how it's written, and in the future, if, if there's clarification, if there's back, clarification, but. I don't, I don't have a vision of this, especially.
So, the, the, you know, I'm, I'm, maybe, it's, it's actually structures may be located in front of our, if proposed structures are, are allowed to find regulations, and if a structure will be located in an area that is, that functionally exists as a property's side or rear yard. So, if, if it's a corner lot, those kids are going to have two fronts and two sides. It's like, so is this inferring that it needs to be inside the front yard setback? Uh, what has to be within, it can be inside the side yard setback, but it has to be behind the front yard setback?
It has to be, it has to be front yard setback.
It has to be front yard setback, but it doesn't need to be side yard setback?
No, no, it has to be, well, the logic is, let's say, let's say the front yard is, the back is thirty-five. Let's say it's forty-five, you operate it like that, it's on a, clean, the house, and that, first.
Correct.
Not, it, it's, it still has to be side yard setback, but it's in front yard setback. Specifically for the second five.
So that I think the way these, it should be worse like this, that the structure can be located in an area uh, that functionally exists and is in conformance with the property's side, rear yard setback.
I mean, that was.
I know.
Personally, I don't think that, I'm sorry, I was.
But wasn't there, concerned about the word function?
Yeah, um, Mr. Sir, um.
No, it's okay. Function exists at the.
So, if, if you read it without the word function, I don't know what that means.
It just exists.
I think I understand what you're, what you're trying, I understand what you're trying to get at. I just think, you know, you can spin it one way, it comes to you, and then it, or it's, or it's a corner lot of houses at an angle like this, and that, you know, it's.
I agree with you.
And that's why, that's why I say an image, because you can be like, you know, oh, there's a picture of what you're talking about, and then, you know, it's, so.
In an area that functions well, or areas that serves well, I don't know if that exists, it's actually better. I mean, that could be, just, yeah, work the intentional, I don't know.
I, I, I've worked it a lot.
Certainly.
Well, you can also say, you can also reverse it and say, won't be primary, primary. Instead of, you know, because that, I think, like, flips, right? Because you're saying, look, maybe it is function side, that, that's the way it stays, meaning primary. Yeah, that's, that's where I was going.
Good.
So, um.
That, there, it's a move.
So if the proposed structure is located on a corner lot as defined in the regulations, and if the structure will not be located in the primary.
Primary.
I mean, primary.
Numbers. Sarah, can you just read the whole thing?
Yep, so, nine, it says the structures are including outdoor or recreational, so these may be located regardless of the seventy-five property, but the conditions of, if the proposed structure is located on a corner lot, as defined in the regulations, and if the structure will not be located in the primary. I'm not looking to be far, so, because would it be beneficial to add, here, the definition, submission of the corner lot, or, 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 the property. So my recommendation is, let's see how this goes for a couple months, and if there's an issue, I will be able to come back.
Great. Which one is this? Okay.
Do we need an effective date, and, um, you know?
How, can the effective date be?
It could be fifteen days, um, you could do March twenty.
That's fine.
Three weeks, sorry, um, March twenty second.
Okay, effective date, March twenty second. Do you want to hear any comments? So, Mr. Chris, do you want to hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further comments, conditions?
I think it's there.
Yeah. Yeah. Excellent. Uh, it's called two vote, uh, the agreement, vote yes, Chris Nielsen? Mark Cosselina?
Yes.
Uh, Chris?
Yes.
Chris Harry?
Yes.
John Angle?
Yes.
Paul Mann?
Yes.
I almost swear to God.
Yes.
Eric Olson?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Sarah. Uh, moving into regular, regular meeting events, uh, earlier, two, nine, South Avenue, the, uh, new restaurants, the new facilities. Do I have any special comments?
Uh, Mr. Trump, I think it's going to be a very nice condition down. It's the sort of thing that draws, um, patrons and people down to an area, which is nice, ninety. It's a, been a empty building for a while, and when anyone made a good, I see this as a, as a positive. Uh, I think a couple of points, a building on that same structure, that same block has a bagel shop and press burgers, open press, and, and restaurants. And that block is already set, it's, uh, making sense to me. Uh, it's, uh, has a lunch and eating function, it's nice, which compares with, uh, it's called the practice of lunch and motion, and other things, so.
If we, um, knowing that on the north side of Broadway, in the two-story structure, it's, it's not residential, it's, it's offices, and it could be held with press burger or bagel shop, uh, bagel shop, press burger, do they have, yes, especially these, so it's, it's not fair to you?
I'm not there, uh, that I get.
I really recommend, have same condition, or the, that the applicant, uh, install, its house can move in that is equal to, at least equal to, if not better than the, um, pre-existing condition of the other two restaurants. There's different levels of exhaust, you know, from, create smells come through.
I think that, I think it's difficult to, um, in force, just because I didn't know, like, the press burger, um, and still, I, like, I don't practice to, necessarily, I don't know, fill things, and I don't know permitting necessarily for press burgers, but I don't know how to verify.
Well, couldn't, couldn't we phrase it as, in the name of subject, too, appropriate legislation, graphic, that it's, so, this, not to, uh, cause waters to be, it's, it's.
I would, I should do, condition you, something above the, how the, for, for, I mean.
I would agree, these building problems, how it go. And the fire.
This is not a special comment, this is just, this is, this is only careful, you know, this, when regulations don't necessarily talk about mechanical, within, within the context of, in, in the district, so I think, right, everything, this, that, this, mechanical element outside. So I, it's not, you know, I mean, given that this is a second, we'll have to.
My question to her, the change in use, uh, of restaurant, by her company, is that, from restaurant.
Second, Mr. Trump. Any further comments?
Yeah.
We call a vote, Dave Rabin, vote yes. Chris Nielsen?
Yes.
Mark Cosselina?
Yes.
John Chris?
Yes.
Chris Harry?
Yes.
John Angle?
Yes.
Paul Mann?
Yes.
Tom Searlo?
Yes.
Yes. Last item, uh, three sixty-five East Wood Road, the Grace Farms modification or special permit, uh, we've been on Monday. Mr. Trump, any comments or questions? Mr. Trump, Mr. Trump, can you say on Monday, I mean, just this one Monday? Yes. As opposed to any Monday, if you're choosing.
Correct.
I'm sure I know exactly what you might, of modification of very single events that happened on Monday, I think, most of the first. Moving there, moving there.
I'm, I think, in question, because I'm on the condition of, like, seventeen, I mean, special permit. And my recommendation is that, also, I might get, we didn't need to take it all, we, Monday was the day that figured out, well, it's in work with them. I don't think there was any, or, that's, that it had to be Monday, it just, it had to be Monday, and I think this is a bad, bad advice, which, well, that is worth being able to, I think, so.
Correct, you were mistaken, Matt? All right. It's called a vote. Dan Rabin, you vote yes. Chris Nielsen?
Yes.
Mark Cosselina?
Yes.
John Chris?
Yes.
Chris Harry?
Yes.
John Angle?
Yes.
Paul Mann?
Yes.
Tom Searlo?
Yes.
And Eric?
Yes.
Okay. That takes care of regular business items. Uh, last level this year is just approval of minutes. Uh, every month, that chance to go through these. Uh, we have the minutes from our special meeting on January twenty-fourth, and the regular meeting from January thirty. Maybe have the changes or adjustments. Mr. Trump, I believe, the minutes, technically, tomorrow. Can we do them together? Are you good for vote?
Uh, we came to motion tonight, Chairman, we approved the minutes for January twenty-fourth, January thirty, two thousand.
All right, sir? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your time tonight. Have a great night.